First item on the agenda for us now is the minutes. Which I don't see in our packet, Josh, am I missing them?
I apologize, they are, they're on the website, I can drop them right into the Google Drive if you give me just a second.
How about if we postpone the approval of the minutes till our next meeting? Moved and seconded any discussion? All those in favor of postponing the approval of the March 3rd minutes to our May meeting, please say aye. Opposed, abstentions, that motion passes. Next is a correspondence from John Toomey and Jim Dwyer on the Memorial Day Parade. John and Jim, oh, sorry Yvonne, go ahead.
I'm going to need to know the names that moved and seconded because I can't always catch them, especially online.
Bob Moore made the motion and Kim seconded it.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks for that reminder, Yvonne, I'll try to remember to repeat it for you.
Thanks.
Josh is sharing his screen now with John Toomey's letter, for those of you who don't have it. John, do you have something you'd like to share?
Not really anything more than what I put into that letter. Over the course of the last year, I've spoken with Georgie and Bruce at the fire department and music teacher. And most recently, the Kristen Heck at the school. They're waiting, Kristen is waiting to hear what the governor wants to do regarding school participation after April 20th. And, and of course, whatever you folks decide is the best course of action. Whether this should hopefully be over by May 25th. I'm not a doctor, seems like it's not going to calm down all that quickly, but it may have, you know, I don't know. It's essentially your call and the governor's call whether we can actually start participating in public events again.
Anybody on the Board of Selectmen have any comments?
Sandy, I, I got a feeling we're gonna be held up past that date.
That's my bet too, we will not be free then.
Yeah, I encourage.
Not free to socialize like this event would be. And especially if it rains, then we all go inside, kind of thing.
Right, we, we, yeah, there would be no social distancing.
No.
Right, exactly, I know some other towns like Hartford and New Haven have already canceled their Memorial Day parades.
I think if, worst case scenario, if, or best case scenario, if we can get together, we just hold it in the, you know, ceremony at the firehouse. You know, like we might have if it rained, kind of thing.
Or could we do, could we do, sorry, Adam, he's in front, Mike, go ahead.
No, I, I, I was done.
Okay, could we do something with like five or six people that are social distancing and we videotape it and at least post it or something in our appreciation or, I don't know.
That would be, that would be a good substitute. Something video, I'm sorry, something videos right at the, by the monuments.
Yeah, and if we could get six, even 10 people, but they all stayed apart, we could still video a group and have a speaker or two and, to at least acknowledge it.
Yeah, this, this is kind of the day that I, I hate to give up, if you know what I mean, because of the reasoning behind it.
But I think, Kim, you have a good thought, because following the format of the ceremony in the past, it just involves a limited amount of people. And without, obviously without music, but I, I think it's, it, it's an important, it's an important event. And I think the video and putting it on the town website probably our best bet at this day.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, alright, so I think the consensus, John, if you're agreeable, is to plan a, an event to be held at the Green. With a limited number of people and we'll see what we can do to get it livestreamed.
Yeah, right now, the CBC is not allowing any, anyone to get cameras and who knows if that's going to be in effect in six, seven weeks. We may not be able to film it.
Well, we could film it Facebook Live, like you'd film it on video and post it on Facebook, post it on the site, it won't be great quality, but it'll be.
Maybe there's a tripod, they put a, put a camera on. The other thing is, did ask John Cabato to be grand marshal of the parade because I wanted to have a World War II veteran be a grand marshal. This is only one of the times you can ever get some World War II. To participate, I don't, this is the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II, I really didn't want to miss that opportunity. But we.
We could invite him.
We can invite him.
Yes, absolutely.
And give him a chair to sit down and.
Yes.
Oh, definitely.
Does any, does anybody know of any other World War II vets in town still? I don't, I cannot, I seen your center name out, I could probably ask Barry. But that was what, that was originally to do, and Barry was willing to, loan this 57 Chevy, lead the parade after the state trooper. But, you know, that may go by the wayside. But I just don't want to, it's our last opportunity to thank World War II veterans.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we may have to do it through a video, but I think it can be done well, in respect to people, we're, we're trying to respect that day.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, John, you will work on some sort of a.
Either some smother gathering.
Let us know what our jobs are and where, when we should be there and we'll make sure there's somebody there to film.
Okay.
Okay, if you guys, you guys are welcome to stay at the meeting, you're also not obligated to, to stay and we wouldn't be hurt if you left, so.
So can I add one question though?
Thank you for the invite, I just got a call from Alan Weedy. For the 300th event that we're having at the library during library week for the 45th anniversary of the Bentley Memorial, so I gotta call him back. Well, thanks for everything, try to do, we'll try to do our best.
Alright, thank you, John. Kim, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so my question was just, so are we officially canceling the parade or are we holding off on that?
I think we're officially canceling the parade.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
I think there's zero chance it would happen, so.
Right, it's very difficult for the schools that probably will not be in session to even put together the bands and.
Yeah, there's zero chance.
All the sports events are canceled, so.
Yeah, hi guys, this is Kristen Heck.
Oh, hi.
Oh, hello, hi everybody, so I, I had emailed with John today and, and I was trying not to put my music staff over the edge and trying to figure out how we would practice with kids virtually. You know, we're already, we're working on that, but, so, yeah, it, it would be near impossible for us if, if they decide that, you know, we're not coming back till, say, May 20th. We, we just couldn't be ready to go for that.
Yeah, so I think that's the best way and if, if need be, I may reach out to your musical department and ask them to recommend some recorded music. That we can just play for effect that day.
Absolutely, absolutely, happy to help.
Okay, moving on, our next item is the letter from Brian Miller regarding the Bolton Road Race, Kim, is he on the call?
He's not, but I can go get him if you want.
No, 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 I, I think his request was to hold the race here on March 14th. And I don't see a problem like that with it at all, assuming we're not all still social distancing, but. It's been a great event for the town and I'd like to see it continue, so.
Do you want a motion?
Unless, I don't think we need a motion unless I think we can do this by consensus.
I think good idea.
Alright, so, Brian has his approval. Subcommittee reports, actually, we have two people on the phone with us who have separate items that they want to discuss with us. The first is. Item 8B, which was consider and possibly act on the draft resolution in support of Bolton's inclusion in the CPACE program. And we have Nicholas Zubo from the Green Bank on the call with us. We talked about this at our last meeting and, at our, I'm sorry, at our. Facilities meeting, and I think we had reached an agreement so that we were just going to approve this tonight. Does anybody disagree with me on that?
Nope.
No.
Alright, in that case, we need a motion to approve the agreement with the Connecticut. The CPACE agreement with the Connecticut Green Bank.
I'll move it.
I'll second it, Mike, Bob Moore's second, Mike, Mike made the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Bob DePinto, are you here?
Yes, yes.
Did you vote aye?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you, Nick, for joining us, you also are, I'm sure have other things to do. Josh and I will somehow get this signed and off to you in the next couple of days. So, thank you.
Alright, I appreciate that very much.
Alright.
Yes, thank you so much, Sandy, yes, thank you for having me, and then again, thank you for all your support, we look forward to working with you all, alright, have a pleasant evening now.
You as well. I'd like, Lori, are you still, Lori Bushnell, are you still here? Lori, if you're here, you're muted.
Almost got you.
Alright, I think I'm good, right?
We can hear you now, yeah.
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 Okay, okay, I asked Lori to join us tonight to talk about the property tax process and timeline alterations. You all got a copy from Josh earlier of Executive Order 7S. And that executive order requires us, if we want to take action, to do so by April 25th. Given the fact that it requires action and we're all social distancing and they gave us less than three weeks. I'm not sure how they expected us to get it all done, but Lori invited me today to a call with the Talent and Wyndham County Tax Collectors. That turned out to be far more informative than anything I've been on so far. There are basically three things that can happen. One is, actually, there's a multitude of things, but one is the tax deferment program. And what that does is to defer taxes payable. For the, that are payable normally on July 1st, that would be due on August 31st. And. I'm sorry?
August 1st.
That's, you're exactly right, sorry, August 1st. So, what that would do would be to change it, change the payment date, the interest-free payment date or the grace period to October 1st. Now, there's a couple of glitches in the executive order that they're, they're planning on fixing. In that it's, the executive order says 90 days, not three months. And because July and August are long months, it actually brings it to September 29th. But they assured us today that that will be fixed, so that's what's called the deferment program. On the deferment program, there are several options. One is that, and OPM has come out with forms and applications, would be that someone has to attest that they have. Suffered economically as a result of this deferral. And they're saying it should be 20%, it's not in the executive order, it's what the OPM has put together. The second option here is that we, as the legislative body. As the Board of Selectmen, may extend the eligibility for the deferment program to any category of taxpayer, business, nonprofit, residents, whatever. Lori, you want to jump in and tell us what your thoughts are on the deferment program?
Well, I'm, I mean, when I look at the options that the state is giving us, and we have to choose one, at least one anyhow, to do. We don't have a, a say in that, we have to choose something. I think the most uniform thing to do would be this particular program. That extends the grace period, talk to her first, for all taxpayers across the board. But with that. Any taxes that are escrowed would still have to be paid by the August 1st date. So, we know that we would, at minimum, you know, if we got nothing else, we would, we would still have 6.5, I think. My report came out to be million by August 1st anyhow. Which I feel like I've been in this scenario somewhat before. One of the benefits of being an annual collection town, you know, so. Now, we have, we have other options available as well. The applica, I guess the application process to that, right now, I think would be really tedious on. On the part of the, of my part, to be quite honest. We would either have to mail out applications to everybody to make sure that everybody knows about this program and has an application to be able to apply. For it to be uniform in that sense, or advertise the dickens out of it. So, everybody knows that this program is here and they would have to fill out this application that basically tests that they are. By the situation, they blocked their job or had a reduction in salary. They would basically attest to that, sign it and return it. And then, I guess I, in turn, as tax collector, would have to flag all their accounts. So, they would have that ability to go to October 1st. I have a feeling, though, there's going to be people that just are not informed enough and don't get that application in and. I don't, I don't see that as a good option. So.
I think that's a terrible option.
Yeah.
And one of the issues is that small businesses, their income is going to be dramatically impacted month to month to month. And, you know, you may be okay now, but in 30 days, you could be in a disastrous situation and I. I frankly, I, if I'm out of me to interrupt, I thought your first suggestion sounded the most sense, either do it across the board or don't do it.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I think uniformity is ideal, you know, if you can do that, if we can afford to do that. That's probably the best.
I'm sorry, did, you indicated, I, I, I mean, I heard you right, I don't mean to interrupt folks, but I want to make sure I heard it right. But you said that the esterol payments would not be impacted, and that's a significant portion of the payments, right?
Yeah, 6.5 million is what I calculated from last year.
Yeah, and, and it's not as if our funds are going to be making a hell of a lot of money in interest.
And that's, it's a quarter of the year we're deferring and it's roughly a third of the money we take in.
Right.
So, we, we should be able to make it.
I figured it would be between 15 and $20,000 of lost interest on the cash on deposit. Which on, on the grand scheme of things is a pittance.
Yes.
Right, I'm glad you tweeted that, thank you.
And I've also talked to Jill, who I believe is still on the call. But last year through September 30th, our total tax collections were 16.85 million. So. We're probably talking about 10, a $10 million deferral for three months. Now, that's an optional deferral, there's nothing stopping somebody who wants to pay it on time.
Yes.
And there'll be lots of people that do that.
You're right.
People like to get it paid when it comes in and be done with it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's move on now to the other options that are available here, because I'd like to do it all with one motion if we could. The second is the low interest rate program. And what this does is. For 90 days, it drops the interest rate from, it's what Lori, 1.5% now?
Well, it's, well, yeah, 1.5% per month, it drops it down to 0.25% per month.
That's not going to say, we're not going to make much money off that.
No.
You know, it's, you talked about the 20,000 is a pittance, this is a pittance of a pittance.
Exactly, exactly, so, I think my personal opinion is that we also ought to take advantage of the low interest rate program.
Which is drop the interest rate on the unpaid taxes?
Correct.
What, that's not gonna, we're not going to make much off of it, you know, if we, if we lose $20,000 by not charging any interest. Getting 0.25% is what, 1/6 of what we would have gotten, so it's about 3,000 or 4,000 dollars is all we're going to take in? By reducing the interest rate, is it really worth it or do we have to do that, or can we just let it go with no interest?
We can't let it go with no interest, we can drop it to 3.
There's a little confusion on my part.
No interest, I feel like we could change the due date.
This is, well, we're talking about delinquent taxes, these are, these are taxes that have been, become delinquent prior to January 1st of 2020.
Oh, okay, I missed that.
That's different, alright.
Misunderstood what we were talking about.
So.
These are current, current delinquents, correct?
Basically, if we, if we implement both programs, my understanding is this low interest one would take care of any current delinquent. Taxes by reducing their interest rates for the next three months.
Okay.
And then.
Is it by person or it's like you just calculate the total?
No, it's billed by person.
It's billed by person.
Like you said, a lot of maintenance, is a lot of paperwork?
I'm not really entirely sure, we do have our program, we're working on developing something that would. That would work.
Okay.
I'm still a little confused though, because when I read the executive, the original executive order, it says from the due date. For me, that means from the original date that it became due, so if somebody came in and said. You know, I want to pay my 2012 grand less taxes, you know, that's a significant amount of interest that would be. Waived pretty much, because it would be the 3% per year versus 18% a year from the due date, but.
Lori, Lori, it's Jill, am I, am I reading it wrong then, because I'm reading it March 10th through the July 1st of 2020? Is that, so anything prior to that would also be included in the lower interest rate?
If any past due charges that were already delinquent on March 10th of 2020.
So.
There's kind of two parts, there's two parts, there's two parts to this low interest thing. It's, it's for any delinquent taxes prior to March 10th up to July 1st. So, if it, if the taxes become due on July 1st, they have. They have the three months at the low interest rate.
No, they have three months at no, no interest, there's no interest. A current tax has no interest until October 1st.
That's the deferral.
It does, it says that interest at a rate of 3% per year for 90 days from the time it's due and payable until time it's paid. But it only says 3% for 90 days.
Right.
It doesn't say 3% for the entire time.
The guy, the guy, what I was going to say, the guidance sheet that we got from OPM does indicate only on those three months that it drops down, but.
It's what it says here too, just 3% for 90 days.
That's it.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Does the town, does the town get made whole by the state then for these programs?
No.
No, okay, these are just, you can choose which law to follow type of thing.
Exactly.
You have to choose one though, you have to choose. You have to choose one of them and it has to be submitted by April 25th.
One of, what, the deferment program, the low interest rate program or the other one?
You can choose one, the other or both, those are the three options.
So, we could, we could just choose the deferment program.
Correct.
And be done with everything.
Correct.
Which makes the most sense, doesn't it, to just choose that and be done?
And that's why the person that's delinquent also has that same 90 days.
Right, they get their 90 days, but nothing changes with their back taxes at all. Right, they get their ninety days, but nothing changes with their back taxes at all.
Right, it's just, it's just everything going forward.
That would be, so, yeah, if you did both programs, that would be.
What do you mean, if we just do the deferment program, period?
If you just do the deferment, that just takes care of the current taxes.
Right.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Not any delinquent.
Not any delinquent or anything, just from when we all got sequestered until things become semi-normal again.
Correct.
Then my, my recommendation would be strictly the deferral program, and that's it.
I concur, I mean, if, if the situation. As I understand it, well, if the situation gets more difficult than it is now, I would think. The governor might come up with something that's a bit more. Palatable that, that, that we can go back and revisit, this isn't, right now, this, we have a choice, but I would think if, you know, if the economic situation gets far worse. I would think we can go back in and perhaps reconsider this, but as, I agree with you right now, this is the only, I think, fair way for everybody, period.
Yeah, and, and the, in terms of that low interest program, we have a relatively low rate of people who owe back taxes anyway, right? So we're talking a very small number.
Yeah, a lot of it tends to be automobiles, isn't it?
And the, the problem that we're trying to fix, the problem that exists now. The problem, what we're looking at is not something to fix a problem that took place two or three years ago.
Right.
That's correct.
We're in a situation now where we're just trying to take care of the people that are hurting today and going forward for the next six months, basically.
Yeah.
You know, from now till July first and July first on, so I think. You know, just take the, the back taxes out of the equation completely and just go with the deferral till October first, as Sandy said, you know, figuring, planning on them fixing the ninety day thing. I think it makes the most sense to us.
Yes.
Okay, I want to point out something, just one other thing, which is item C. In what we're talking about, and that is that if it's a landlord who participates in the program. They will be required to pass forbearance to their tenants or lesses. And that's not something. And that's the, but that's for the low, well, I don't know, that's, oh, to be eligible for the deferment program, they must provide documentation. That the person has or will suffer commensurate forbearance, so Lori will be taking applications from landlords.
I, I, I have to look into that a little bit more, because if you are doing a deferment for all bills, that would include landlords. I'm not sure that we would need to, I mean, if you were doing the application process. I could see that they would have to do, they would have to do something a little different, because their. Their situation's different than a regular person. I don't know, that's my take on it, I could be wrong.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring it up to the board in case we get to the point that. It, they do have to do an application, and somebody reaches out to us, but Lori, if you could follow up on that.
I will.
And let us know that it, we'd be much appreciated.
Absolutely.
All right, I think we're ready for a motion, and I'd like to move that we adopt the deferral program. As noted in Executive Order seven S. And item six A to apply to all taxpayers.
I'll second that, Sandy.
All right, so it was moved by Sandy, seconded by Mike Aramita, is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, and I want to do a poll vote on this one. Bob.
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Mike Aramita.
Aye.
Bob Di Pietro.
Aye.
Kim Miller.
Aye.
All right, Sandy Pierog votes aye, so that is unanimous. All right, moving on, whoo. Back, let's do, since I know we have some people on the Board of Education here. There are items seven, item nine B two. Items. Which is to approve, item two, approve the ratification of stale and leftover funds to new projects. When we last met, we had approved the application, the reallocation, rather. To go to the Board of Finance for approval, they approved it. And then we had to cancel our town meeting that was scheduled for tonight. In retrospect, that turns out to be sort of a good thing, because Jill and Josh identified. That there were some additional funds that were going to be stale very soon. In town building repairs and upgrades, so we have now included that in this total, so there's a million oh fifty five. One ninety six twenty five to be reallocated. We have gotten a lot of feedback, items, Executive Order seven S. Talks about handling in, in item seven, which. Is, I don't even know, on page, on page seven of nine. Talks about how things get approved. Without a meeting, and what can get approval without a meeting. It's not terribly clear, however, we have received. Information through across Council of Small Towns. That the governor's intent here was any. Thing that is hampering the orderly operations of the town can use this procedure. So. Since we cannot act, and if we don't act on this reallocation. We will not be able to do certain projects during the summer, like the tennis courts. And I specifically made that very clear to the attorney in the governor's office. We can use this special procedure. Which means the Board of Selectmen has to approve, the Board of Finance has to approve, and then it is done.
Now, does that mean our budget is done for next year without a vote of the taxpayers?
Um, that, that's item one, which we'll get to next.
That's different, that's just, that's just for these.
This is just for the reallocation.
Right, reallocation.
Capital reserve funds.
If I may, I'd just like to comment.
Sure.
Sandy, one of the things that's significantly different about this than, than the town budget, these are funds that the voters have voted on. Had approved, and were, were collected, or various projects are also were approved by the voters, and these were leftover funds, so. We're not talking about anything that's going to affect anyone's taxes, other than reallocating and putting money towards what are capital projects. One time, one, one time payments, it, it's not, does not impact operational budget, that's why it's so different than talking about the regular budget.
And it's, it's, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Jim.
And it's super specific, right, like school funds have to be used for school, that's the whole thing about the tennis courts and, right, like, it's specific.
Correct.
Meaning school stuff has to be used for school stuff. Okay.
Well, it's not quite that specific, but in the spirit of good town Board of Education. Cooperation, the capital allocation, and whatever the Kappa stands for. Decided that it would be a good idea to reallocate anything that was previously allocated to.
Okay.
A board, a Board of Education project, allow it to remain that way, because. In the end of the day, that was the taxpayer's intent.
Right, okay, so it's ethically specific in the spirit of the law.
Correct.
Thank you.
Except for the fact that I, I'm not disagreeing with anybody, the tennis courts actually belong to the town as opposed to the high school.
Well. Agreed.
They're, they're used for high school projects, so I think in the spirit of things, it's correct, it's just a simple formality or semantic thing, but no problem, I agree.
I can just tell you, the Board of Education reps to the Kappa Committee were very happy that.
Yes.
That was one of the proposals.
Yep.
All right.
So, do we? Can we act on this one?
We can, we should.
And then I would approve the recommendation from the Kappa Committee as presented before us today, and it's a reallocation. Can you pull it up on the screen for me?
Total of one million fifty five thousand one hundred and ninety six point twenty five.
Thank you. I'll second that.
All right, it was moved by Bob Mora and seconded by Bob Di Pietro to approve the reallocation. In the Capital Reserve for one million fifty five thousand one hundred ninety six dollars and twenty five cents. All those in favor, I'm going to do another roll call, Bob Mora?
Aye.
Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Bob Di Pietro?
Aye.
Kim Miller?
Aye.
Sandy Pierog votes aye, that's unanimous, thank you. Let's now go to item nine B one. Which is to authorize the Budget Making Authority to act in the place of a public vote in the event that health conditions prevent a vote from taking place. A little bit of background here. Josh is, has pulled up the resolution, which was a lot of heretofores and wheresses. But the background on this is that our charter requires that we hold our budget referendum no later than May, and I'm losing. Twenty fifth, thank you.
Yeah.
So we do have the ability, under this particular section. To extend our budget date until four thirty days. However. That's only for budgets that were required to be adopted before May fifteenth. So we're outside. Of that window, and as of today, nobody can tell me that the governor is going to act again to extend it. So the Board of Finance has been working along towards. The original schedule, which would have allowed us to have the referendum. In May. This authority. Would allow. If you look at item one. The Board of Selectmen adopted our budget, and the Board of Education adopted their budget and sent it to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance is required under this section, under this Executive Order. To hold a public hearing in accordance with the Charter by means of an electronic meeting. And shall encourage and accept written public comment. And then the Board of Finance shall act and take all reasonable steps to provide the budget and receive public comment. And then, whoops, that's a bar. Thank you. The Board of Finance is then authorized to adopt no earlier than May tenth. The budget for the twenty twenty one fiscal year, and set a mill rate sufficient. For the other estimated annual income of the town. Without holding a town meeting or budget referendum. And then item five just says, the Board of Finance shall, as corrected, designated by our Charter. Separate resolutions for town government, Board of Education, and the Capital Reserve budget. So at this point. It is possible that we could postpone this to our May meeting. But I don't think at our May meeting, we're going to have anything any different than where we are today.
If, if we vote on this today, does that automatically, basically, or automatically eliminate the town meeting or the referendum this year?
No, it doesn't, because if you look at the highlighted paragraph on the script. Resolve that in the event the previously declared emergency is resolved, or declarations presenting Assembly of Groups of Persons. Are lifted on or prior to May tenth, the Board of Selectmen shall act to reinstate the usual process of a referendum regarding the proposed twenty twenty one budget.
And, and we would have from May tenth, our required fourteen days before the twenty fifth, so we could hold our referendum. Before our legal date that we would have to do it by.
That's the.
Correct.
Okay, so then, if we vote on this, we still have, we'll, we'll have both options then.
That's our intent with this, yes.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we do that.
All right, is there a second? All right.
Do we have some discretion?
Yep.
Because I have a question, and I guess, I'm sorry.
Tell her that that was Mike Aramita moved, Kim Miller seconds.
Yes.
Go ahead, Bob Mora.
I'm sorry, no, I. Well, the earlier explanation, earlier, I read this thing, and I read it twice, I was still. A bit confused about this thirty day. Postponement or whatever, is that. I thought we qualified, apparently we don't, that we can't move everything for thirty days.
No, it's, it's because the governor's executive order said May fifteenth as a cutoff date. So anybody whose budget had to be approved by May fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
Thirty days.
All right, so it doesn't impact you, that the approval of the Board of Finance, it would be anybody who's, okay, through, through either. Yeah, the electrical, either a town meeting or a. Yeah.
Yeah.
Process, okay. Now, it makes, it, it's, it's a ridic, it's, well.
Sandy, it's Jill. Yep. Um, May twenty fifth is Memorial Day. So will you really have that, those fourteen days, because before that, you have the weekend? Actually, we have May twenty sixth, because. Okay. If this is Memorial Day, so we could fall to the next day. Okay, all right.
Okay. That's, yeah, it's.
Yeah, it's crazy, there are about eleven of the hundred and sixty nine towns. Who fall outside the governor's order, and Lucky Bolton is one of them.
Okay, all right, thank you, I, I, yeah, okay, I, I, I was confused, and I. Deal with the best of not very good options, I guess.
Yeah, we've, Josh and I have spent a lot of time on conference calls, asking questions.
Well, you sure, yeah, you, you must have, because, I mean, I read it, I read it, I read it, I still found it exceedingly confusing. I'm not that dumb, some people may think so, but it's. Okay, all right, I'm, I'm done with my comments, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor, I've forgotten?
Yes.
Yes. Motion by Mike, second by Kim Miller to adopt the resolution as presented.
Okay, I want to do a roll call vote here, um Bob Mora?
And reluctantly, I will have to agree, yes.
Mike Aramita?
Yes.
Bob Di Pietro?
Yes.
Kim Miller?
Yes.
And Sandy votes aye, so that also is unanimous, thank you. All right, um is there anybody else on the phone who's just here for a particular item? Since our agenda is so far out of order. Okay, moving on, let's go back up to re subcommittee reports. Um I think the Finance and Administration Subcommittee minutes are in the packet, I don't think there's anything there that needs to be discussed, um that isn't on the agenda as a separate item. Properties and facilities, Josh, you want to talk about the town garage?
Um sure, so I spoke very briefly today to John Butromovich and he told me that things are continuing to progress, the block walls are done, uh the siding just has a little left. All the doors are in except the double door to the existing garage and the electrician started work today.
Good.
It looks good, I was out there today, it was good.
All right, um I believe there are no uh open space management and acquisition updates. Um have we heard from Kim Walsh or is she on the call?
Don't is on the call, uh the last I spoke with her, um she is continuing to uh work with uh the near northeast Aquatics Research uh on setting some kind of electronic town hall meeting. Uh we don't have a specific date yet set for that, but we're hoping to be able to reach residents electronically with some information about uh the lake, its current status and treatments that may be happening this coming year.
Okay. Um the twenty budget report um looks like the only three areas that are trending above uh the seventy five percent level, which we would expect them to be our conservation, who is just a few percentage points up the fire commission, and we've talked about that before, and data processing, and we've talked about that before as well.
Sandy, just a question, uh the money that we spent for the uh police at the high at the school, where did we take that from?
Um we are still waiting for a bill.
Okay.
So it hasn't come from anywhere yet.
Okay, that's a good enough answer, thank you.
Um Josh reached out to them last week to ask uh for timing on the bill, and I don't know if you've heard back, Josh.
I was told that I'm supposed to hear an estimate on this Thursday, hopefully before the Board of Finance meeting, but uh it sounds like they're having some difficulties with getting the right people in the office at the right time to answer the questions, so.
Yeah, good luck on that Thursday.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, since it's already been a couple, well, if they're not concerned about the money right now, neither am I, but I don't want it to roll over to next year.
Right.
Um all right, so now we're into uh budget transfers and appropriations. And Josh, I'm gonna let you talk about these.
Sure thing, I'll go one by one down this list, um that's presented uh before you right now, and Jill, feel free to jump in if I'm missing anything. Uh and I apologize how many different transfers there are, uh it was my hope that we could that there would be fewer of these, but of course, circumstances being what they are, we have uh a whole extras. So first and foremost, we have a transfer in the other payroll administration line. Uh and that's due to the fact that I I believe that this is what happened, and Joe, this is Jill and I's best guess. Uh when uh when Joyce was making the putting together budget numbers for this year, she assumed that I would be taking health insurance, but I've actually waived that this year. Um and the payout for such waivers comes out of other payroll in the given line, in this case, administration. Um and the payout is about twelve hundred dollars. Uh and of course, that puts other payroll down by about twelve hundred dollars. Luckily, thanks to the fact that we have had a vacancy in the administration office for the last few months, um we have plenty of money to simply move that from payroll into other payroll. Uh rather take motions one by one, I figure I'll go through all of these and then take any questions that exist. So please feel free to jump in and stop me if you have questions. The next item is rentals, this is one of the items that unfortunately, due to circumstances, we have to present to you today. Uh so the town has rented two RVs for the purpose of having quarantine areas for first responders who may become exposed uh or even infected uh by COVID nineteen. So to be as accurate as possible in our accounting, uh and to best appease uh the auditor, it's Jill's recommendation and my recommendation that we transfer the amount of money for um the rental from professional technical services into a special rental line. Um and that is the exact amount that it costs for us to have those for.
Is that because of a potential rebate from FEMA?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So should we put them in rentals or should we put them in emergency, like we have that emergency fund?
Right.
Uh we don't currently have an emergency fund, uh as you'll recall, we broke that out for next year from the land use uh department.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
So in the future, yes, that would make a lot of sense, uh for right now, I I think that designating it as a rental that we can uh very specifically identify with the bill, what it was for uh is gonna be the best way to go.
How long does that rental go for?
This rental will take us to our uh just about our May um Board of Selectmen meeting, so at that point, if we decide we still need those rentals, I figure we can transfer a little more then.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem. Uh the next line that you're seeing here, we have a few in a row that, as you'll recall, we made a few changes to personnel this year in moving some folks up to full time uh and uh just adjusting um adjusting positions in general. So for the assessor's office, uh we have added a little bit to Pam's plate as she's now assisting Lori while also taking on the role of assistant to the assessor. Uh and that's only a a small amount of thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. Um but that can easily be found in uh transferring that money from other payroll in the assessor's line and a small amount in other payroll in the tax collector's department um to cover uh that one thousand three hundred and fifty dollar uh deficiency. The next two, we have the the assistant town clerk has moved up to full time. Uh and you'll see that we're moving what was her salary in the other town clerk payroll line uh to town clerk full time payroll uh is for the most part, and then the the difference there, which it would come out of the tax collector department's other payroll line for two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars uh is the amount of money, uh that's the increase in the hours that you're seeing uh is that amount of money. And the same thing happened in land use, uh because we signed that contract with Ashford, uh we have moved Randy Heckman up to full time. Uh he is uh you know, certainly taking that well, but um the land use other payroll, uh we can transfer a lot of the money that's needed into the payroll line, uh so that covers thirty six thousand uh and change. And then the remainder that we need to cover the additional hours that he's working uh can easily come from the tax collector department's other payroll line uh for four thousand eight hundred eighty five dollars. The last two here, um the first is the library payroll line is down by two hundred and eighty eight dollars. To be honest, I we're not a hundred percent sure why this situation occurred, our best guess is that the library payroll line was calculated before union contracts were fully negotiated last year and a very small miscalculation has led to a deficiency of two hundred and eighty eight dollars, very easily found in the other payroll line in the library's budget itself. And the last transfer that you're considering tonight is from the other payroll line in the tax collector's department, which again, we're saving a lot of that money by having not filled Pam's old position uh in the tax collector's department and instead favoring a seasonal uh assistant in the tax collector's office, moving five thousand dollars from that line into other payments under the Social Services Department. And the purpose of this is to allow for a resident assistance fund uh to be bolstered a bit. Uh given that a lot of people are in financial hardship right now, we want to do what we can to get ahead of this, make sure that people have access to uh the resident assistance claims that we already offer and make sure that that's uh funded to that end. So again, I apologize that this is quite a few, but in in reality, it's not that much money that's being moved, and for the most part, it's being moved from uh one specified purpose to a very uh core related specified purpose, especially when it comes to uh the assessor's office, town clerk, land use and the library.
I apologize for my ignorance here, that last one on the social services, is that part of the senior center? What it, so is that something different?
It's the Senior and Social Services Department, I probably should have written that all out on this form, uh it's one department and it's the same department that does manage the Resident Assistance Fund.
Okay, so is that like the food bank? What like what's under the Resident Assistance Fund?
And that would be cash to um assist someone who needs help with a rent payment or utility payment.
Yep.
Something of that nature.
So we have a process where people apply and they say, I'm short two hundred dollars on my rent.
Correct.
Right, and then they go through a pro, uh Kim, they go through a process where they they're referred to state agencies prior where where that isn't covered, you know, Tom, then assist. Uh so that's why these things come in, also assist on, you know, repairs or something like that, that they can't, they can't deal with.
So I I'm all for it, but like who does the vetting? And that like, is it the organization and then what whatever's left comes to us and we fill it or?
Access.
Um so Carrie Concatelli in our office, our Director of Senior and Social Services, of course, like Bob said, like Sandy said, all of these items are going to other state agencies first to see what more they can do to help out. Uh but once it comes to our office, it's primarily Carrie Concatelli who's in charge of reviewing those applications and making sure that they
Okay.
to preset criteria.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay, um I think we can deal with these um with one motion.
I'll move transfers as presented.
All right, is there a second? All right, it's been moved by Bob Mora and seconded by Bob Di Pietro. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, and I'm gonna do a roll call again, Bob Mora?
Aye.
Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Bob Di Pietro?
Aye.
Kim Miller?
Aye.
Sandy votes aye, so that's unanimous, thank you all. Um Josh, I think there are forms that we need to sign, so will we get those in our emails tomorrow?
Yes, much like you received the uh sorry, the check listings today, I will also send around uh an opportunity for you to sign the transfer list, um and I'll send those electronically signs, uh transfers over to Jill.
Okay. Um reschedule the twenty twenty one annual budget referendum, um. I wonder if we want to do this or if we want to wait till our May meeting.
I think we should wait.
I agree.
Yeah, I concur.
Postpone this by consensus. Um new business. Um well, I we've talked a lot about um what's going on with the COVID nineteen um state of emergency, Josh, Jim, Kristen, um and a host of others, and I have been on conference calls uh twice a week with, oh, and Mike's been there as well with our uh Emergency Operations Committee um for the town of Bolton, making sure that everybody knows what everybody else is doing, what everybody else's needs or concerns might be, and I think it's been moving along pretty well. Um we currently have had five confirmed cases. Um um one member of our uh public safety team um is currently recovering from the virus. Um I got her update on status today and um they're coming along quite well. Uh we have five confirmed cases and we have had two deaths, we currently have one resident um still in the hospital. So um in the grand scheme of things, um somebody very nicely pointed out to me that our death rate was five times that of New York City. Um but if you look at the fact that you have two deaths, um I don't know is I want to take the fact that our rate is five times that of New York City too seriously.
Yeah, you can't spell that on a small population.
That's apples and oranges, I don't think it has any correlation.
Yeah, that, and I agree with you, but it kind of put me on a real downer the day it was pointed out. Um and that was the day somebody dug up and stole my daffodils from my front yard, so.
Okay, sorry.
Well, there's a real
That was insane.
Yeah, exactly, all right, um.
Hey, Sandy, can I ask quick, just a quick question?
Sure.
Yeah, I it's one of the things that I I even suggested to the the Health Board is that one of the things we don't see is recovery, and I don't know if how the state is is issuing that information or not issuing, and if in discussions, uh I think it would be helpful to to put that in, because we know there's been people who've recovered of those who have been identified as having the coronavirus, but I I don't see that anywhere, um I I I'm not saying that, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just suggesting that um uh perhaps is is it the state not giving it out and and I I sent a note to the uh Health District, but I'm not sure what's going on on that note.
I I have not seen um anything on recoveries, um we all know that there are a lot of potential cases out there who are untested and unidentified, who might just be self quarantining um or in in fact, might just be out walking around in the world. Um one of the questions that the governor is uh who every day at some crazy unannounced time between two and four
Right.
has an update uh press conference, uh one of the questions he's been repeatedly asked is how many recoveries have we had? And it doesn't appear that anybody is tracking that.
No, okay, so I'm not the only person asking that question, okay.
No, no, every there's, it seems that there are a lot of questions that get asked over and over again for which there are no answers, but um we're all learning and hopefully, one of the other things we had asked for, uh we, the um chief executive officers of the town who have a call with the governor once a week as well, one of the things we've been asking for is a list of unemployment applications by municipality of residents.
Hmm.
Um and they told us that isn't available.
Okay.
So you know, it's like, why not? You know where these people live, it should be sort of an easy count, but we were told it's not as easy as we might think, so.
They're they got, they probably have such a backlog that they don't know yet.
Well, they they respond fairly quickly, uh well.
Right now, they have people that have come in from other departments to to evaluate things, I don't think they've
But because they've responded, that doesn't mean that the data
Right.
is fully available in their system to be sent out, I mean, they responded, they responded very quickly, I know a couple of people just the last two days, and and it 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 was a And, and it, it, it was a tedious process, but they had a response within an hour or two. So however, well, but, but that's just a response to, to a, a computer program.
Yes.
And that then has to be turned into data that we can use. And obviously, in a quote forty-five-year-old system, that's going to be slow coming.
Yeah, we just got a comment in our chat, um, Josh, can you take that link that Trish Brud's put up? And, um, that with the Board of Selectmen, it's a link to recoveries. Um, it appears to be by countries, not towns, so.
I, I, I get the country part, yeah, thank you.
Well, so they, if you click, so I look at that site all the time and if you click on the USA. So if click on USA, you can get it by state. But I would want to ask, like, so if you go down, yeah, I'd want to ask, and we're like thirteen or something, yeah, there we are. I'd want to ask, like, how they're calculating active cases? So you can tell recovered by total cases minus deaths minus active cases? Like, how are they calculating who's still active? Like, if you were in the hospital and you recovered, I can get that, but like, how are they collecting data on the random people that got tested? Were positive but are home?
Yeah.
Yeah, that number seems high with what the governor shared, so I don't know what the updates are. But I do know that there's so much data going out there around so quickly that. Sometimes it's tough, but thank you, Trish, for sharing that.
Yeah, and if you go to the right, it does tell you what source the data comes from. So you can click on, so let's see, Connecticut, Connecticut is coming from three different sources. It's coming from the government portal, which is lab testing. That's government too. Okay, all three are government, yeah.
Yeah, you probably really won't know until they start doing the antibody test.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Josh, did you have anything else to add on the COVID-19 response?
Um, if it's, alright, I do have under my report later on, a couple of things that I was just gonna mention in terms of operations. Just so that you're all up to date with what's happening in offices, but I can hold off on that if that's.
Okay.
Okay, can I, can I make a comment on that now, Sandy? Because you, you brought up a good point, um, that we, we have a group of people. Our, our, our town employees have really done an extraordinary job under these circumstances. And we don't, we really, we don't have an opportunity to really thank them for it or recognize them. I know this is a, a very small format, but I know maybe Josh, you could, on our behalf, let the folks know that. We are extremely grateful for, for what they're doing and the efforts they're putting in. Uh, it's really, uh, because the words can't, can't justify our feelings to how much we appreciate it.
I'll tell them that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we able to have people, are people at home, they're in the office or a combination?
Actually, how about I just say a little bit about it now?
Right.
Okay.
The answer is. Yeah, not a problem. Um, the answer is both, right now in town hall and in the finance department, we have one, uh. We're trying to have one person from each department coming in. Uh, sometimes it happens to be two, depending on who needs to be in the office at any given point in time to, um. Whether it be answer phones and emails, whether it be collect bills that are coming through mail, collect the mail itself, whatever the case is. Uh, but the goal is to have one person per department. We're also splitting shifts in the buildings and grounds crew. So we have two individuals who are on earlier in the day and we have two individuals, we split them, so they're never in at the same time. Uh, and the other two are coming in in the evenings, so that way we can ensure that there's no cross-contamination between the two. With the last thing we want to have is the whole buildings and grounds crew go down at once. Um, highway has been directed to not share vehicles and to socially distance as much as possible. The library is currently open, uh, for scheduled pickup only. And I've directed them as of today to have no more than two people working the library at any given point in time. Um, all of that is subject to change as things progress and potentially get worse. Of course, my goal is to keep everyone as healthy as possible, but also to limit further exposure. Should somebody, um, become ill and start presenting symptoms, as, as noted this past weekend, we started to see. Um, so I will keep you all updated and certainly I'm working extremely closely with Sandy as well as Jim Rupert. Uh, and our health director, uh, Rob Miller. Determine, um, how to best proceed with all of these things. But we are doing our best to keep those who are coming into the office as safe as possible. We acquired today fifty masks, these are cloth masks that will be distributed to all members of town staff. For use when they're either out in public or they're on the job. Um, and we're trying to do a number of other things, of course, to keep, uh, folks around town safe. For example, have library not be open to the public, but having scheduled pickup be available. We've closed the tennis courts, we've closed playgrounds, uh, but our parks all remain open and active as of right now. If you have any other question, that, that kind of summarizes what I wanted to share with you about our current operations. Um, there is very little right now that we are not offering, at least to some extent, although albeit remotely. Um, through phone calls, through emails, whatever the case is, uh, the, the vast majority of services are still available. Any specific questions that you all had that I can help answer for you? And if anyone asks, we are, I believe the school is providing still three times a week, uh, meals for students on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. I believe they're providing breakfast and lunches if you go at nine AM to, um, to the high school, I believe. And that is for students, students and their families.
And I just wanted to add, um, school vacation is scheduled for next week and that will continue. Um, so there will be, um, no distance learning starting on Friday for a week. Not that I think anybody would go anywhere, but, um, it'll at least give the teachers and the students a bit of a break. Um, also, um, we have decided to close town hall again. It would normally be closed on Friday. Um, we are also closing it on Monday and Tuesday and staff will be, um, working from home on both of those two days. Uh, that will allow the buildings and grounds crew to come in on Tuesday and do a deep clean of town facilities. And, um, hopefully that'll help keep our people a little bit healthier.
Yeah.
So.
I'm happy about that school decision because I know some surrounding towns have said, oh, students aren't getting learning. And they've deleted or canceled April vacation. And as a parent myself of two middle school kids, I'm very happy that they made that decision. It's, yeah, it's a lot, like, it's a lot for the teachers, I totally get that, it's hard for the kids. It's totally different, it's hard for the parents when they need to support the kids and they're trying to work and so I'm, I couldn't be happier.
Grandparents too.
Say that again?
Grandparents too, I have Friday for babysitting and I won't have to be teaching.
Yeah, there you go, it, it's, yeah, I, I'm very happy about it, I was gonna send something to Kristen and, uh, Daryl. Um, I don't have anyone at the high school, but just saying that because, oof, it's a change.
I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is. Next item, new business is nine C. Consider and possibly act on the newly drafted financial policy manual. Um, we spent a significant amount of time talking about that at our, um. Last subcommittee meeting, so are there any other questions or concerns about this?
No.
No.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve the financial policy manual.
I'll second that.
Alright, so it was moved by Sandy, seconded by Bob Mora. Any further discussion? I'm gonna do a roll call vote again, Bob Mora?
Aye.
Mike Aramita?
Aye.
Bob DePietro?
Aye.
Kim Miller?
Aye.
Sandy votes aye, so that's unanimous, thank you all. Um, on the first selectmen's report, um, I just wanted to point out to you, charter revision is still meeting. They're doing, um, all of their meetings online. Uh, there was one today and another one tomorrow, I believe. And their next general meeting is Wednesday, April sixteenth, um, at seven PM. Sustainable Connecticut also held our meeting, um. Last month and virtually, and this month, it'll be April twenty-second. Um, and Josh, it's back over to you.
Uh, thanks Sandy, uh, I don't have too much more to add, obviously I told you a bit about our COVID-19 preparations. Um, we are, I don't know if all of you have had the chance to really go over it. We do have a, an emergency operations guide that's up on our website, it's on the homepage. Um, if anybody around town has questions about our operations, that really is a comprehensive place to, or, or document to show them. And it does have a link in it to the state's emergency operations FAQ. So it's, uh, I think it's a great resource, uh, please feel free to share that around. The other, only other thing I wanted to add on to what Sandy said is on Thursday, and, and sorry, it is Thursday, the sixteenth. Uh, but earlier that day, please, everybody remember, we do have a facilities and public safety, uh, subcommittee. Um, that it's going to be, uh, we're going to have the Green Bank joining us. They have a proposal for solar, a solar array to go over as carports, um, at the high school. And it sounds like, they seem pretty excited about it, they seem to think it's very feasible. And they're going to talk to us more about specifics and numbers and what it means for us to move forward that project at said subcommittee meeting. So of course, I know there are only three members of that subcommittee, but all of you are invited.
What time is that, Josh?
The time, I want to say it's.
Seven?
Well, you can send it out on email, you don't have to.
In AM, I, I, I think, hold on one second.
That's okay. You don't have to drag the meeting up because of that, you can just email it out, thank you.
Sure. It's a one PM. And that's my report, unless there are questions.
No, but I wanted to give Josh a real compliment, that, um, emergency operations guide was his idea. Um, has been very helpful and I know, um, staff were grateful, as was I. Because it's, um, very easy to send someone to look at that. And they've got everything they need to know how we're operating through this, um, emergency, so thank you, Josh. And he has been invaluable, um, throughout all of these meetings. And, uh, I can't tell you how many times I've sent him something and said, I need you to figure this out for me because I can't think. And it's happened, so.
Thank you Sandy, the same certainly goes in reverse, um, it's, the whole staff really has come together and. Uh, it's been very helpful to have such close connections to, to everybody and have, uh, such accessibility too. Thank you.
Bravo.
Alright, I think unless somebody else has seen something that I have not addressed.
I will then move to adjourn and wish everyone good health, stay, stay healthy. We want to see everybody in great shape at our next meeting.
Woo-hoo, thank you. Uh, wait a minute.
Thank you, everybody.
We didn't vote on it yet.
No, oh, so excited, was, was there a second?
Yes.
Kim's second.
Kim can do it.
Move by, or seconded by Kim Miller, um, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yeah.
Alright, bye-bye, everyone.
Good night.
I know.